It's 6:00 PM on Monday, March 28th, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Selectmen, and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we always start with public audience. We have a few people here tonight. Everyone is allowed five minutes. We will call you out when it's a minute and then at 30 seconds. And I will let Joan take the honors tonight, if that's okay? I would let you... Oh, okay, go! I was giving you the courtesy. Hi.
Ready?
Yep.
How are you? Hi, my name is Stephen Antonio. I live at 133 Holcombe Street in Simsbury. Now I'm here representing myself, Nord Christensen, Melissa Brett, and David Richman. We are all multiple property owners and developers in Simsbury. Combined, we pay over $600,000 a year in taxes to the town of Simsbury. This does not include what our 160 tenants pay to Simsbury of their own private property taxes. We are residents that proudly give back to the community whenever the opportunity arises. As such, we are involved in multiple community organizations, have various appointed and elected positions in town, and can be counted on to have our community's best interests at heart. To say we are stakeholders may actually be an understatement. The reason for our speaking out this evening is a deep concern over what has and continues to be occurring within our town. Having worked with town staff for decades, we have not only fostered a deep appreciation, but also a great respect for how fortunate we are and have been to employ such talented, dedicated, and capable staff over the years. However, over the past several years, we have watched as one after another of these talented town staff employees have quit working for our town. While we respect that these are career positions, we are dismayed at the disproportionate amount of people leaving the town of Simsbury's employment. We are not placing blame, but must acknowledge these departures coincide with our town manager form of government. We have observed favoritism. In addition, we've been informed of a significant decline in morale by many staff members, and that a toxic work environment has emerged. We have given advance notice of this troubling situation to various members of the Board of Selectmen, as well as our town manager. We were assured that you would take this feedback seriously and be proactive, that we stood in dismay as our talented staff quit one by one, citing an unhealthy work environment as they walked out the door. We are not proud or happy to be speaking about this publicly, but the Board of Selectmen is complicit as it appears that this is not being acknowledged as a real and present situation. We are not placing blame on the town manager as the town manager is not the boss of our town, nor is it an elected position. The Board of Selectmen are not subordinates to the town manager, but rather the supervisors, and we ask that you acknowledge what is happening to our staff and take action. During the last year, we have watched as our town staff has been gutted. We have lost our town clerk, our town planner, our town engineer, who in full disclosure is leading to retire, but still even he is getting help. We have also lost two town zoning officers, and now it has just been announced that our assistant town planner is also quitting. This will leave us with neither a town planner nor an assistant town planner for a short period of time, and more importantly, a now non-functioning town government. Projects will now be forced to be put on hold, take longer to be approved, and this is frustrating, as well as an additional cost of doing business in Simsbury. An unacknowledged result is these multiple departures is that we will yet again have to build a rapport with all of these new people and have lost all of our goodwill we cultivated for years with the previous town staff. We will also not have the experience that these professionals brought to the table, enhanced by their extensive experience within the town of Simsbury. Of particular frustration is the loss of Mike Lynn after eight years. The best town planner many of us have had the opportunity to work with. He cited the town manager as the principal reason for his decision to leave our town, as did the town clerk and now the assistant town planner. We acknowledge Maria Capiola has a wealth of ability and knowledge. We also acknowledge the Board of Selectmen donates their time and effort for what is, at most times, a thankless job. However, if we ignore the fact that one of our business managers was gutting our business staff, would be disregarding our duties, and ultimately, our businesses would surely fail. After Mike Lynn quit, two levels of interview panels for the new town planner were created. The proceedings revealed even more items of concern. The town manager promulgated a set of both required and recommended background requirements for all prospective candidates. One of the candidates clearly did not qualify for the position under the required portion of the job description. Despite this, the town manager forced the first-round interview panel to still interview the underqualified candidate.
One minute, Steve.
Yep. This was done despite the concerns voiced amongst the panel that he did not meet the minimum qualifications the town manager herself created. Furthermore, an applicant who was extremely qualified for the role wanted to apply for the job. We have a great deal of respect for this particular candidate and would have been a very easy fit to place them in the position of our town planner. For some unexplained reason, the portal to apply for the town planner position was closed prematurely, and they were initially not even allowed to apply for the position. They were ultimately included in the interviews and in fact were one of the two candidates put forth. The town manager insisted we add the now-qualified candidate to the two unanimously chosen by the panel. The justification was that the second-round interview panel would have more to choose from, even though he did not meet the base requirements. Although this third candidate did not make it successfully to being our town planner, the arbitrary and capricious manner of purposefully ignoring required job-free conditions has two significant negative effects.
30 seconds.
Number one, the behavior has the potential chilling effect of causing otherwise excellent candidates to avoid applying for the town of Simsbury for job placement, where the examples of favoritism has become ubiquitous. And number two is our understanding that to ignore the town's own hiring rules could well be considered an unfair labor practice, which in turn would expose the town to liability. We urge the Board of Selectmen to authorize outside counsel to investigate this matter and to recommend the appropriate action. Our town attorney and labor attorney are conflicted and could not be impartial regarding influence by the town staff they continue to work directly with. We further implore the Board to acknowledge the mass exodus of talented staff as the first step in repairing the deal which being done.
Thanks, Steve.
Time.
Little action. Thank you. You guys, you're good. Okay. I know you said that, I just want to make sure. Okay, so next up will be Joan Coe.
And you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the speech.
Our elected officials on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance are more concerned about the reelection than serving the taxpayers of Simsbury. The town of Simsbury was given $3.6 million from the AFA Act, American Rescue Plan Act. Instead of using the money judiciously, it was used as a slush fund for all the political interests in town, with much of the expenditures continuing long after the AFA Act sunsets. Many capital expenditures of long-term costs for maintenance that are not shown will affect future budgets. All of the of the elected officials allow a free-fall mentality to continue, knowing that many expenditures will spike the budget in years to come. There are expenditures for employees and social service for the town and police department. Adding a $70,000 police crews of her comfort dog and $8,000 for a stipend to the officer assigned to the dog is political theater with veterinary costs grooming licenses and food long-lasting. The logistics on the deployment of the dog has not been addressed. The most ridiculous reason for adding the doggy expenditure came from First Select and Wendy Maxousis, who stated publicly that she loves dogs and must have the expenditure in the AFA Act without any background on the cost-benefit analysis. If Wendy likes dogs, there are many avenues she can use to satisfy her needs without using taxpayer money for this nonsensical expenditure. Selectmen Sean Asker and Heather Getz voted against the comfort dog inclusion. Simsbury, along with other towns, have serious mental health issues as a result of easy access to mind-altering drugs and the legitimacy of gambling. Children buy many of the drugs in the home with easy access to medicine cabinets where drugs are stored. With easy access to drugs, addiction has increased with children and adults that affect many families. All these addictions cannot be satisfied with throwing money into a Band-Aid approach with the use of social services and comfort dogs when they can only address the problem, not remedy them. Once the problem is confirmed, placement is needed immediately for short-term and long-term benefits. The wait for services are needed immediately, not available, for days, months, or years. The hospitals return addicted patients in hours with no referrals to counseling. This becomes a revolving door. Money should be allocated for more institutions that provide therapy with more psychological and psychiatrists, psychologists and psychiatrists to serve people with mental issues and addiction. Many people are not entering the profession, adding to a shortfall in service. Throwing money in an issue is wasteful. Using the root causes and remedies can be addressed. The cycle of addition will continue. Simsbury residents should be concerned that the planning department has had employment issues since town manager Maria Capiola was appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Maria Capiola appointed Janelle Mullen, a zoning official from Mansfield with preferential treatment. This appointment caused the planning department to work under a toxic environment. After several grievances of unfair labor practices against town manager Maria Capiola, Janelle quit without notice for the poor work performance. Town planner Jamie Rabbit resigned after alleged irregularities in invoices for compensation for travel. Mike Lynn was appointed town planner and Robin Newton was promoted assistant to Mike Lynn with six months probationary period. Town manager Maria Capiola did not go on to confirm Robin's appointment as a result of the grievance filed against her. It is alleged town manager Maria Capiola asked Mike Lynn to change Robin's work performance from exemplary to poor, which he would not do. This now placed a target on Mike Lynn's back. Mike Lynn is now a town planner in another town. The town planner position is now vacant with the interim town planner leaving April 1st, leaving the department with two low-level employees managing the department until April 11. The search for a town manager was flawed since the search committee voted for a long-term applicant. But voted, they voted for a long-term applicant, but Maria Capiola appointed a less-qualified applicant with a salary of $125,000. George McGregor's salary in Vernon was $105,155,14. Chief Bolter has stated that about six officers may be retiring in 25 years of service. Chief Bolter has 23 years of service. Will Chief Bolter be retiring in two years, completing 25 years of service? With the police department voting no confidence in the chief, I would assume that the chief is under stress on a daily basis. Is the comfort dog included in the budget for Chief Bolter's mental health? All my comments will be posted on Simsbury's @, Twitter, Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to... We don't have any presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to the First Selectmen's report. I just, I want to start out to thank Senator Richard Blumenthal. He came to Simsbury last week, and he joined Representative Hampton, a couple of Ukrainian charities, most of the clergy in Simsbury, and a lot of community members to participate in a vigil for the Ukraine that was held at Trinity Church in Terriffell. We had a nice turnout. And Pastor Taylor Albright was a master of ceremonies, and he brought us together to support and provided a lot of vetted ways to make donations, which I guess I can try to share that somewhere because they were all researched. I want to congratulate the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company, who put on their 75th anniversary ball two years later than planned this past weekend. It was a beautiful event at the River View, and I was honored to be attending in attendance. I'd like to thank Gary Wilcox, President of the Fire District, and Chief Baldus, and we look forward to our continued partnership for another 75 years. Want to mention that Tom Hazel, our interim town planner, formerly known as the assistant town planner, will be leaving the town of Simsbury at the end of the week. I hope you'll join me in thanking him for the work he did here in town and to wish him well in his new role. We also want to mention the Chamber had their breakfast leaders... Chamber of Commerce had their breakfast leaders' breakfast, business leaders' breakfast this past week.
It's a lot of breakfast.
Chad Thompson, President of Events in Bickford Aerospace and Defense, gave the corporate view, and we had Mark Mitchell, who gave a more colorful view as President of the Mitchell Otter Group. And there was a lot of business leaders there, and we were lucky to have a good contingency from the town. I was there, Maria, Melissa, Heather, Amber, Tom Roy, and Bob Crowther came. So it was really a nice event, and it was a pretty packed house there. This Thursday, John Hampton's hosting a Children's Mental Health Forum on Zoom with guests that happen to include our very own Director of Social Services, Kristin Formanak. And in this that's going out, there's the link to the event. I want to also mention the Recycling Subcommittee Swap Shop has plans to open for the spring season this Saturday, and Mary Turner is working with her team and the Lions Club to get things rolling. The Simsbury Granby Rotary Club is hosting a day of service to plant a pollinator garden at the ABC House on April 9th. There's more details to come. I'm going to give Amber a big plug here. The Earth Day Cleanup for the 23rd. More detail is going out this week. Amber has taken the lead on this for the town. She's partnering with Representative Hampton and has engaged the Farmington Valley Trails Council, and we know that she's going to do a bang-up job. This Thursday, the library will hold a ribbon-cutting on the new 24-hour loan lockers that were purchased. And that's Thursday at 10 o'clock. And the last thing, but not least the most important, is that the Board of Finance will be holding a public hearing on Thursday, April 5th, at 6 o'clock at the library in the program room. And residents are invited to speak about the budget, and both the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen will present our budgets to the public. And then this will be followed by a referendum at Henry James, tentatively scheduled for May 3rd. And that's my report for tonight. Maria?
Thank you. Thanks, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates under our coronavirus update. Some very good news to report, but we did reach what's sort of the gray or clear status for the municipal COVID alert system, which means that we now have less than five cases per 100,000 residents. That's actually the first time we've reached that level since July of 2021. You might recall that shortly thereafter, the Delta variant became prevalent in Connecticut, followed by Omicron. So again, that is something we have not seen. Case numbers have slowed for quite some time. So again, very good news to report there. And just to make sure that folks saw this announcement, but US households are eligible to place a second order for free at-home COVID tests. They can do four per order, and we've provided the link to where you can sign up for those if you're interested. A couple of items under Board of Selectmen Business. Just again mentioning that we do have the public hearing on the budget coming up on next Tuesday evening. And then just a discussion item possibly for this evening if the Board of Selectmen has a strong opinion on this. But the Board of Finance did mention that they will be working to determine where the $564,000 budgeted for capital needs, but not yet allocated should be appropriated. Some different options that they've discussed and staff has discussed with them is possibly allocating those funds to approved capital projects that are currently proposed to be funded with bonds. Another option would be to allocate the funds to the Capital Reserve. This was identified by Amy and I as the preferred method. And that could, for example, help to offset inflation costs that are expected with the Latimer Lane project, as well as possibly to assign funds to future debt service payments and some of the out-years, again, associated with the Latimer Lane project. Again, if the Board of Selectmen has a strong opinion on above, if you feel like you would like to comment on any of those methods, you could certainly do so by adding fiscal year '22, '23 budget discussion to your agenda this evening, but otherwise, no action would be needed. And also just a quick reminder, your next regular scheduled meeting is just off-cycle. We have it coming up on Wednesday, April 6th, at 6:00 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall. Because of school vacation week, there is no meeting scheduled for Monday, April 11th. And a couple of items under Department News and Notes. Today, we welcomed Jen Wellington to our police department. She recently became the Administrative Secretary for the Police Department, replacing Kelsey Chamberlain, who was promoted to Deputy Finance Director recently. Jen joins the police department with a wealth of education, knowledge, and over 10 years of experience in administrative and operational functions in a variety of settings. She has a bachelor's degree in exercise science from Sacred Heart University. Congratulations and welcome to Jen. And a quick note from Social Services. They are offering their popular Home Alone Safety Class Program again. This is geared towards children ages 8 to 13. It will be held on Monday, April 18th, and we have registration information in the report.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So would anyone on the Board like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the budget discussion to as Item G?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll have Item G, 2022, '23 budget. Okay, so now let's get into Selectmen action. Tax refund requests. Move effective March 28th, 2022 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $6,405.43 and to authorize town manager Maria E. Capiola to execute the tax refunds. Is it moved?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. I wanted to lay with Eric. Okay, the second item is a request to extend the fee waivers for temporary outdoor dining. I have a couple of things to say. Do you want to talk about this at all?
Sure, sure. If it would be helpful, do you want to lead off? Or would you like me to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this stems back to, you know, the governor's extended his bill through April 2023, and I had to look back because I remembered when Main Street Partnership, Sarah Nielsen, organized the governor coming out here last year to sign the bill. Was it, I think he was signing this bill, remember? I looked at...
It was two years ago.
I thought it was two years, but I looked at the picture, and it was from last year.
It was last year.
Yeah, it was. So he came out at Millwright's, and we were there as he signed the bill. But I did get a letter from Sarah talking about the extension and the work that she did locally, and she wanted to thank some people at the Outdoor Dining Committee that helped put this in place over the last two years. And she mentioned Patrick Torval, Henry Miga, Jason Brown, and of course Laura, who administers the program on behalf of the Planning Department. So I just wanted to thank everybody that helped make this happen, and I'll turn that over to Maria.
Great, thanks, Wendy. So you may recall, we were first operating off of an executive order and then later off of legislation, temporary legislation that allows for the outdoor dining. We do have a very small $25 building permit fee associated with tents when tents are involved. The past two essentially seasons, summer seasons, the Board of Selectmen has waived the fee waiver for that purpose while the restaurant community is recovering from the pandemic. We are anticipating that this legislation will again be extended through May 1st of 2023. The current fee waiver is set to expire this spring. So our recommendation would be, if the Board of Selectmen continues to be comfortable with this fee waiver, would be to extend the fee waiver through that May... I'm sorry, May 1st of 2023. Sorry, not May 31st, but May 1st of 2023. And this would be contingent upon, again, that temporary legislation passing again, as well as the zoning commission approving it again as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions up here? Read the motion.
Well, and Maria, I think, I don't know if you mentioned this, but like the impact was relatively minor, right? It's a $25 waiver. We had 10 restaurants that took us up on it, so we're looking at like a $250 waiver.
Okay, that's good to call out. Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
So move effective March 28th, 2022 to extend fee waivers for administrative zoning and building permit fees through May 1st, 2023 for restaurants seeking approval for temporary outdoor dining contingent upon approval by the zoning commission.
Move that.
Okay, Sean?
I'll second.
Amber, second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes?
Wendy?
Yes.
Just a quick... So Maria, the, just kind of keeping on that thread. If we have a, if we have an established indoor dining establishment that created outdoor dining for the first time on their property, and then subsequently, I think like many of us have experienced an uptick in business or, you know, a new way of looking and delivering their product, and they want to continue to do that. If alterations need to be made to the footprint of the property they own or the property they lease, that has to go through planning. Is that correct? To look at the treatment of that space differently? Is that the correct statement?
It goes through planning.
Okay. So curious, in, you know, as an outgrowth of the pandemic of, as we've all, you know, none of us could have foreseen all the different ways that we look and view life in different aspects, whatever. But I imagine there are some restaurateurs who want to continue on the new way that they're delivering, or a hybrid version of how they're delivering their product, their service, and their experience. So I'm wondering, is the Planning Commission... I hope that we've had conversations with the Planning Commission that encourages them to continue to be expansive and interpretive in a positive way towards the restaurant community going forward versus, I would think, reverting back to an interpretation of life and space usage as it existed pre-pandemic? Because I can think of, I hope that we see some restaurateurs coming to us and saying, "I want us to interpret, I want to reinterpret the space that I have working with my landlord, indoor with my own property, to use this in a different way going forward" that might not be, in the current way that zoning looks at things might not respond favorably to that. So I hope we have those, for the folks who are the liaisons or the people that are pushing it or people are hearing it. You know, I hope that we have that kind of lens moving forward with the people on zoning versus, and I'm to the great, but I hope that conversation is kind of taking place. Because I want, I know that some of our restaurateurs, out of necessity, pivoted, but also found something awesome and new and want to continue moving that forward.
Yeah, and what we could do if the Board, you know, has a strong consensus on this is send a note to the zoning commission to that effect because if and when the temporary legislation ceases to exist, there would be, I think, some opportunity within our zoning regulations to make some modifications potentially to outdoor dining. So again, I think if that's something that the Board is generally supportive of, we could certainly send them a note expressing that.
Yeah. And it seems like if a restaurant has been able to successfully operate for two years with some kind of different blueprint or, you know, having this outdoor dining space, then having to go back all the way through the process like it, you know, and re-vet it, it seems like we've kind of vetted it, have we not, through the two years of, if it's working, then, you know, would there be some way to perhaps grandfather some of that in or expedite that? Because you would think that that's what a lot of those zoning rules are to vet is, you know, things that could go wrong, but those have probably been worked out.
I agree. We just need to balance that, right, with previously, and you think about like communities more like West Hartford and otherwise, where you didn't encroach on the sidewalk space because people walked. And now it's perfectly acceptable to encroach on it with restaurants, but are people going to shift back to they don't want the sidewalks cluttered?
Right, right.
They don't have the same thing here. They don't have the same thing here. But, you know, as as expectations, you know, signs are everywhere now. This town, three years ago, prided itself on clean streetscapes without lots of sandwich boards, et cetera. There were very stringent zoning codes, and we've all kind of stepped back from that. So we do need to balance how we got here with what makes sense, I think, with what you're saying, with what makes sense to businesses going forward. You know, I mean, this this town lost its mind that there was a food truck at the Historical Society. You know, some folks were excited about it, lost their mind, and some folks were furious, lost their mind. So, you know, I think we need to continue to make sure that we're doing what's appropriate and not not just a knee-jerk pandemic as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of the lines, Sean, I think you're you're, you know, that that is a great example, is is the proliferation of of signage to make sure that you understand, I'm here.
Yep.
In business and whichever we allowed that. And I also agree with the the understanding of sidewalk and then and then do we scale back for that. But I'm also thinking, and I could be completely wrong, but I'm thinking to myself, I look at our friends across the street, you know, we've got, we've got great stewards of businesses across the street at Sims More here, right? Not Sims More, at Simsbury Town Shops. And I think of pop over taking parking and and putting up and and putting up that that tent, which I think was a fantastic opportunity for them and for us to have a place to go, right? And I don't know if there's some sort of regulations that require a certain amount of that tell me to shut up? I don't know if there's a certain, you know, number of parking spots that needed to be happened there, but we waived that because, you know, for hardship or whatever. But I hope that coming out of this, there's a conversation that occurs between the landlords. Maybe maybe you don't need all that 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 parking, or maybe you don't need curbs cut the way they are, and we can we can adjust it to allow for this moving forward. It's a dialogue that happens between, it's a triangulation between the owners, the operators, and the town to say, you know, we have, we can, we can look at this new now with a new lens, not, not, again, that's that's what I'm thinking.
We need to take the good and not promulgate.
Learning from that out.
Yeah, perpetuate and make it easier, because, yeah, we need our businesses to continue to not only survive but thrive, right? And if, take the good, good stuff from it.
Yeah.
But also not infringing on, again, we like, we like the way the downtown looks, right? And if there's eight thousand sandwich boards, that really what we want as a community. So there's a balance there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Heather is the liaison to planning too, so we could fill her in. But is it is it also an opportunity to get on their agenda or just to come to a meeting and have them bring up kind of this conversation? And have our liaison or a couple of us sit in on that conversation?
In the sense that, and they're they're fantastic people. I mean, they're all, I'm sure they have all the best. But is there, it'd be interesting to know, is it, are there some best practice changes or learnings that came out of this that they're going to work to to adjust their regulations? I hate that word regulation, but that's all, just to, you know, what are the changes coming out of this that were to evolve to things that we didn't know before, that we didn't know?
Sounds like a great project for EDC to lead.
Hmm, okay.
I can definitely work on some draft correspondence for you all to review. I think that would be a good way to kick off that conversation.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the the two thousand and twenty-two State House bond request. I'll give a little background on this one, just because I was kind of close to it, and I'll turn it over to Maria. You know, Representative Hampton had some funding opportunities that come, I guess, around all the time from the state. And one of them was asking if we had any bonding needs for Terriffel Park, which is of interest to him. And so since we were investing so much in this year's budget to Terriffel Park with our ARPA money and other, I turned it over to Maria and team, and they came up with some ideas on on some additions we could have to round out, you know, what we've already put in the budget. So if you want to, you want to talk about that, Maria?
Sure. So again, we do, as Wendy mentioned, have a number of planned improvements for Terriffel Park that were part of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan and incorporated into the capital plan. For the potential items for the bond request, we really thought of, okay, additional items that we are, you know, currently scheduled for, some enhancements potentially to the park that could be nice improvements. So the short list of items that staff developed was softball fields, netting, some parking improvements, river access improvements, gate improvements, water fountain, as well as some security camera technology that park, because it is somewhat isolated, has been subject to quite a bit of vandalism and illegal dumping over the years. So we have put together an anticipated cost estimate for those items of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Representative Hampton's office has informed us that the application ideally would be submitted by March thirty-first, so just around the corner. It is a one-page form. Tom DeBerski, our Parks and Recreation Director, has started to complete that questionnaire. We did also just complete, excuse me, submit the questionnaire to you, just so you have an awareness of the questions we would be answering.
Yeah, thank you. And and it was kind of nice, um, everybody put their thinking caps on, which is stupid expression, but I said, I said it anyway. Because we have the pickleball courts, we have the softball fields, we have the river there, we have the the pavilion. So just like any, you know, accessories to go with those things are really what the focus was. So it seems like a good list, and hopefully we get it approved.
Are we putting this through the State Bond Commission? Are we putting this through STEEP? What are we putting this through?
My understanding is that this would be an application for state bond funding through the
So just the State Bond Commission?
I believe so.
So this is not STEEP?
Not STEEP, correct, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Okay, so I am going to read them.
I do. Just philosophically, we're going to bond for, at a state level, for ten or twenty years for some of this stuff? I mean, we wouldn't do that locally.
Well, they're going to, they're bundling up a bunch of stuff, right?
No, I understand that, but, I mean, these are not bondable projects by our own standards locally.
Correct. Generally, these are items we would pay for in cash.
Okay.
Unless, you know, in totality, if we were to take all of these items, try to package it all at once, maybe, but as individual standalone items are correct. They're not items we would typically bond for.
So just to be clear, this is not free money. This is the state, the taxpayers of Connecticut are going to pay for these over ten or twenty years.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And I mean, Phil, we wouldn't do these locally as bonds, is really my point.
We wouldn't do these locally as bonds at that length, but we would still consider it a project.
We would pay cash for them.
Look at the size.
Yes. You could also look at it that if we didn't have the pickleball court on our list, we could have paid for all these things, and we could have said, bond the pickleball court, and then it would have been more of a hunk of a of an item.
Yeah, see, yeah, exactly. That's, yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're thinking, but we've already paid, we're already, you know, unless we want to change our budget around. We've already budgeted for that with our ARPA funds, so this is kind of like a a package deal to round out the park. I don't know if you, anybody, did anybody up there want to talk? It's just pointing up to them. Okay, so I'm going to read the motion. It move effective March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two to authorize town manager Maria E. Capriola to submit a two thousand and twenty-two House bond request form in the amount of thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for improvements to Terriffel Park. And should the appropriations requested be awarded, the following additional motion is in order. Move to accept the appropriations request for improvements to Terriffel Park and authorize town manager Maria E. Capriola to execute all documents related to the award.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Amber, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes.
When will we find out if we?
It's a good question. I do not know.
When the Bond Commission meets, they meet what, quarterly?
I'm not sure.
They have an agenda, and there's projects on there, and they they do them in chunks. So Representative Hampton will have to get it on the agenda and advocate for it.
So probably second quarter?
I don't know. I'm not sure when they do it during the short session. I was, that's what I'm looking for, is when their agendas are. Because I was trying to figure which one it's going under.
Okay, so moving back, moving on to the next item, which is item D, the supplemental appropriation of paving funds received from Aquarian, and I will let Maria take this one.
Sure. So you may recall, we have done this in the not-too-distant past. When Aquarian is updating and doing work to rehab their water mains, if paving is involved, they have been providing us with a pavement, excuse me, with a payment to do that pavement restoration. We've generally found that to be advantageous to us from a cost perspective, as well as just in terms of ensuring that the roadway is restored to a condition that meets our standards. So the current amount that they have sent us for pavement restoration is a little over four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So we, in order to appropriate those revenues towards paving, just need the Board of Selectmen to approve the supplemental appropriation, which will then also be presented to the Board of Finance.
Okay. I had a question. When did we get the money from Aquarian?
Tom, do you know how's the check come in?
I I believe it has, yes.
And does it go?
Actually, this is, this has been a great relationship, and we work very hard to coordinate our paving program with both Aquarian and Connecticut Natural Gas. And this has just been a really productive relationship.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so move effective March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two to approve the supplemental appropriation request for road paving as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Bond Commission meets on the thirty-first. I assume we're not on that.
Oh, that's why.
We're not on that agenda, so that's what I'm looking at now. There's another one at the end of April.
Okay. Okay, so the next item is the Mira update. There's a lot of notes on this one. So I will turn this over to Maria and Tom Roy, or Tom Roy and.
I'll let Tom take this.
His favorite topic.
Yes.
I know, we always love the the excitement of the government when we get to talk about trash and other such fun topics. I think for years, a lot of you on the board, I know, have been very interested in keeping an eye on what we do with our solid waste in town. Unfortunately, the condition of the Mira plant continues to decline. Just about three months ago, we had talked about this internally, and we had hoped that we would be able to do one more year with Mira before looking to go to another alternative. Right now, what we're seeing is community after community are leaving Mira and going with private haulers. Most of them do not have the advantage that we do, where they don't have subscription trash service. They, as a town, provide that as a service, which means they're effectively on the hook for the tip fee. Because we have subscription trash service, we really have two options to consider. One is that we stay with Mira for another year. The tip fee that they are proposing is a hundred and sixteen dollars a ton, which is eleven dollars more than we're paying today. The other concern, in addition to the fee, is as all of these communities leave Mira, we are concerned that their cost of operations are going to increase exponentially because they're not handling the same volume and quantities. So it becomes much more expensive to handle a smaller volume of trash. And we are concerned that if they close the Hartford plant, they may send our haulers that collect trash in Simsbury to other facilities that they own, including Torren. No confirmation of this. There's a lot of unknowns. And because there are so many unknowns with Mira, we are recommending that as of July one, we would release our flow control, which right now requires that all trash collected in Simsbury is brought to Mira. And instead, we would allow those that collect the curbside trash and the trash from our businesses to bring it to any legal facility that they find the best rates at. So we're basically letting them make their own choices, and it may be that they want to haul it farther to get a lower rate, or they may want to haul it closer to get a better rate. They could still, in fact, bring it to Mira. They would just not be under our blanket rate. So the motion before you would be to allow Maria to cancel our long-term MSA agreement with Mira. And then following on, we would have to have a meeting to repeal our flow control ordinance.
Inside, because we currently have a zero tip fee for recycling, and that, I remember, was pretty rare from the bids we saw last time when we opted to stay in with Mira.
Yep, the the tip, the tip fees on recycling have come down for a while. Recycling and MSW trash were almost equal. Communities were paying nearly the same. They are dropping. More facilities are becoming available. But again, it's going to put a little bit of pressure on our trash haulers to negotiate their best competitive deals.
Check my math. My understanding from talking to a local hauler is roughly twenty-five percent of what they dispose of is the recycling piece. So while it's not the biggest, it's still important to consider.
That's correct. And also the tip fee and of both recycling and the MSW is only half of what you pay as a consumer for the removal of your trash curbside.
For the gas, the trucks, everything else, right? Yep.
So I have asked this, oh, go ahead, Eric.
Can you elaborate on what makes you confident that a private haulers would be able to do at least as well as we could if we, you know, signed on with Mira?
Okay. We investigated what these other communities were getting in terms of bid rates for where they were sending their municipal solid waste. And generally speaking, Murphy Road, which would be one of the potential places to to bring trash, which is located adjacent to the Mira facility in Hartford, was charging in the range of a hundred and eight to a hundred and twelve per ton, depending upon which town and how many tons they were committing. That was just one hauler, but as we looked at these other communities that were doing independent bids, the numbers were all substantially better than Mira, at least, you know, seventy-eight percent better. On that, that tip fee that I just quoted you included recycling at no fee. They matched same setup that Mira had been doing.
Talking about, that's different than what it was previously, right? Because I I remember like seventeen, twenty, twenty-five dollars a ton, I thought, for recycling the last time we looked at this.
It's it's amazing that it's flip-flopped in in the last twelve years or so, where for a while they were paying twenty-five dollars a ton for recyclables, and it flipped as far as people were paying sixty-five dollars a ton to get rid of it.
Paying our recycling, right, is is what happened, so.
Exactly.
Which is amazing that we paid to recycle by putting it on a boat and sending it to China, but.
So I, and and I I have been being close to the to the trash issue in the past.
It's exciting.
But it's interesting that this is one of the ones that we continue to have to sort of, you know,
For years.
This is the, you know, the family member that keeps coming back to reunions. It wasn't fighting, you know? So the the, I think, one of the, one of the interesting parts of the dialogue previously was that with Mira, and correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the attractions there was that we were able to sort of control the destiny of how our trash was dealt with. And 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 it was something that was trash to energy, which seemingly, whether or not it's good or bad, it just, it had a good marketing to it. So when, when, if we dissolve our partnership, and I have no, I have no, I have, I don't know the right direction. I'm going to defer to the to the more knowledgeable. But if we dissolve our our contract with Mira, then we are, most likely, you're going to go into the open market with our, allow our haulers to go into the open market. And then we really don't have a say as to what, how our trash is disposed of, no pun intended. Is that a, is that a fair statement? So is there a component that as, that, because Mira is going to, Mira is falling apart. It's just a matter of how, what day it falls apart, right? So the, 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 the goodwill that we get of sending our trash to a place that disposes of it in a certain way that may be more responsible, that ultimately is going to go away unless Mira gets rebuilt. So it's just a matter of, are we sending our trash to a less desirable end, end game sooner or in a delayed fashion? Is that a fair statement? It's going to, because our haulers are going to look for the lowest cost. They're not going to look for the lowest cost plus the most
environmentally friendly.
Environmentally friendly way to get to dispose of the trash. Is that a fair statement?
Neither is the dissolved Mira either, and that's the challenge, right? I mean, they're talking about sending the trash out of state, putting in old mining holes. I mean, it's, none of these are good options.
So and I'll wrap up here. My question, the question I haven't asked yet is that, are we, so, do we have some responsibility because of some ordinance that we wrote to ourselves that say we have to, we should have a voice because we have oversight to 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 dispose of our trash in the most environmentally sensitive and responsible way? Or do we not have anything that exists that that's put on our shoulders to follow this forward more closely because of that purpose?
Sure. So what we do have right now, the flow control ordinance, it essentially says that our our waste does need to go to Mira. And I believe that probably goes back, and and Tom, you might be able to correct me on this. I believe it was early eighties, I think approximately was the timeframe, where Mira, essentially, the communities that were participating in Mira were asked to implement this. So that's very common. Many of the Mira communities have very similar flow control ordinance to us. I think that the challenge that we're all facing, Chris, is that point that you just described, is that the trash-to-energy plant, it it's going to be shut down. You know, we're hearing maybe sometime later this year, probably next year at the absolute latest. And unfortunately, the state is not supporting that facility with dollars to actually restore and renovate it. So unfortunately, again, what we are being told by Mira is that they're going to essentially be functioning like a transportation, and that our trash will then be trucked out of state regardless. So it's a very unfortunate situation, and I think many of us Mira communities had hoped otherwise and very passionately advocated to the state to take a different position. But unfortunately, they're not funding the facility, and so I think we're all just finding ourselves in in this current situation now.
But so I just want to, but I just want to make sure that there's nothing in our, hate to go, I said always the charter, but there's nothing in the charter that says you need to be a participant in this conversation to ensure that trash, first, you know, you exhaust all avenues that trash be dealt with in the most environmentally sensitive. No, it's not about that. It's more about leveraging your position to ensure the lowest cost for your residents. That's your first, your, but your primary lead, your primary objective.
Yeah.
And after that, anything else kind of comes secondary.
The only, the only reference in the ordinance is that we mandate recycling.
Okay.
I can't see anything else.
Thank you. I just want to make sure.
Environmentally structured.
Just want to make sure we didn't need to, I was, I should not be looking into this deeper as far as legislation exists that that we're supposed to be.
It's a fair philosophical question. The problem is, is we don't have the solution to it with any of these.
I'm fine. I know.
But he's hauling.
I, yeah, I realize that, Sean. I just want to make sure I understood.
You're bringing up exactly the problem here.
Why are we so ingrained in this discussion versus it being a free market conversation outside of supporting Mira?
Well, we were paying for stability too, was part of it too, when, or we were contracting for stability, right? Tom, I mean, that was part of it, is we could go to the open market every three years, but as, you know, as we learned, I think this is the fourth or fifth time I've talked about tip fees, is it goes like this in the open market, whereas Mira was more like this, if you can see my graph. It was, it was going up, but it was a more predictable steady rate. And at least in my tenure, we prioritize that for the residents over subjecting to the market forces.
Okay.
And I think the other big thing that we bring all together is back in the early eighties, you know, the state and all of these towns got together and built the Mira facility, which at the time was called the Mid-Connecticut Project. And it was to handle this waste that we all generate. And at this point now that it's it's gone through its entire life cycle, we're now finding ourselves without a next better option. And I hope that with the next few years, that the state through DEP will will help us come up with a better way than essentially sending our trash out of state. There are better technologies out there. And we're, with this decision, we are not prohibiting ourselves from doing the next best thing when it becomes available. from doing the next best thing when it becomes available, hopefully in a very short timeframe.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? Cut in here. So if we, you know, what is our exposure? So we have pains and we have all waste, right? They will be finding people themselves to bring their waste, our waste to, right? So we're going to be relying on them to get good prices to bring back to us, right? So that's.
Us as the consumer, not us as the town.
Yeah, to all of us. So that's one risk, because if everybody else is going out into this market, the costs could go up, right? Because there's a lot more demand out there for these guys. So I don't know what they're, and then if they find a good deal and they lock into something, you just said the prices may change. Are they gonna, are we stuck locking in? If they lock in somewhere for five years, whoever they're going to have, wherever they're going, you know, what's our, what's our hook there or exposure?
All of the haulers have commercial and residential accounts. A lot of times for the commercial accounts, they may bring it to a different location because it's primarily just dumpsters, it's different trucks. I think that they are going to be watching us just as we're going to be working with them. I did reach out to both pains and all waste in advance of this. And it's unfortunate that these are our only two options. Either we stick with Mira or we release the haulers. Different opinions between the two haulers. Both of them had said that, you know, they would be able to continue to provide reasonable fees for our residents. One of the two haulers has a business relationship already with one of the disposal facilities. So again, it may change the dynamic between the two haulers. And there's always the potential of an additional hauler or two coming into Simsberry to offer up, you know, an alternative.
I guess, what's the risk to our residents? Is there a risk to people if we switch?
If we make the decision to terminate our contract with Mira,
Yes.
Immediately, consumers are going to see the price of their waste change. That's what's going to happen. And so the risk of, the risk, the risk is that we're terminating a fixed, you know, a fixed expense, a known fixed expense earlier than it's going to be terminated. Because it's going to, that fixed expense is going to, known fixed expense is going to be going away in about a year, essentially.
But just to be clear though, the cost for Mira is going up right now too. So either way, the cost to the residents.
Correct, but we, the one that we knew that was locked.
We just don't know.
We don't know the cost. So that we're, so the change in our residents' trash disposal is just, is going to be coming, the change to a higher cost is going to be coming sooner rather than essentially a year. That's only, but the long-term risk is going to.
No, it's going up right now.
It's going up right now.
Even the Mira cost is coming up.
I just want to be, the risk is if we stay with Mira, it could.
Excale, escalate, expect exponents. We have no idea what their cost of disposal is going to be, whatever the.
Because they're losing customers, so then they're.
And then we move to the free market later and we're the last ones in the game. And then again, to Wendy's good point on supply and demand, if we're the last one with demand, we can end up with a really poor rate. So there are benefits to getting into the public, to getting into the private market sooner when there is additional capacity, because rates will change right on a normal supply to demand curve.
And it all, it sounds like, Tom, from what you said, that like, you know, Mira's rate is the 116 a ton, which is about an 11% increase, 10 and a half, I think. It sounds like the rates you quoted that other haulers were able to get were much less than the 116 right now.
108 to 112.
Right.
How is it moving that other communities were able to negotiate if they were going to move to a different disposal site?
Towns where, the towns that there weren't, the towns that weren't, because there are Hartford County towns that aren't Mira participants.
That's correct.
And in those.
That's what I'm saying, there are towns that used to be Mira towns that have now left Mira. And they're doing that in droves.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, we have an important small business, local small business owner. But in those towns, are there more options? Do they have more hauler options or more removal options? Or are they, are they one and two service towns as well? So the question is, could the cost come down because a new participant enters the market to haul? But who previously wasn't here because they were locked out because of Mira?
Depends on how they do it, right, Tom? Because some municipalities are the collector of trash and they contract with a hauler to do it. And that hauler has the entirety of the town. And then there are other communities that'll do it like we're talking about, where there are multiple haulers, right, Tom? That aren't necessarily constrained to a facility. So it depends on the model they have, right?
Exactly, so if you use Farmington, for example, as a tax, taxpayers receive a bill for trash and sewer service. It's a fee, it's not an actual tax bill. And that's set by the town. The town then is responsible for paying the hauler and for paying the tip fee. So communities that are set up like that are at far greater risk than Simsberry because as the tip fee increases, they're on the hook for that actual increase in the tip fee. Avon, Simsberry, I think Glastonbury, where we're subscription service, we care about what the residents pay for, but our direct liability is less. We don't have the ability to contract with anybody other than a municipality or a municipally owned facility for the disposal. So that's why we only have the choice of Mira or the open market.
Because open market, does another hauler come in, this competition is now opened?
Yeah, we, yeah.
So, you know, we have a small, we have a family, small business that owns one of those. And I'm not encouraging them to lose market share. But as an outgrowth to offset of cost, does competition create?
Well, if all waste comes in with a lower tip fee than pains, right? I mean.
People can make decisions. I mean, again, we're leaving it in the residents' hands to make the decision as they do today. But there could be more differentiation in cost between the two haulers than perhaps there is today. Because today, the cost differentiation is how efficiently the two haulers run their business.
Right, as opposed to the tip fee.
Right, so we're introducing a new component to their cost structure. And again, it's whoever operates their business in the best model. Or do you pay a premium for one or the other because you like that company? You know, and again, you know, it's, we are opening, we're opening up the residents to risk on the tip fee, but that risk exists regardless of the option. And to me, I'm deferring towards the open market and letting exactly what, what I think we're all talking about here is, let it truly become an open market discussion. And then again, let's see if we can continue to lobby the states and other member towns. We shouldn't give up on the Mira concept in terms of making sure that we do have a clean and effective way to distribute our, to get rid of our waste, so it's not shipped off to another state. Because I mean, philosophically, I think, you know, we all have a problem with that. That doesn't feel right. But in the short term, you know, I think, I feel strongly that we should open it up to the market and let the market decide what's best. Now, we have to repeal the ordinance, right?
We would also have to repeal the ordinance. Just quickly, one other point I do, that's okay, I do want to make regarding the tip fee that Mira has offered, is they did make it very clear to us that they're actually dipping into reserves to make.
To maintain that. So they're subsidizing.
Exactly.
So the insolvent organization is using cash to subsidize.
Correct, in addition to the fact that they are starting to lose some of the bigger communities who are, you know, going out to the open market and looking for options. So I think it's, you know, twofold in terms of being concerned about, you know, how sustainable is that tip fee as they continue to lose towns? But also to make that tip fee work this year, they needed to use reserves in order to make that work.
So 4% subsidy, that's not going to last.
Well, Hartford left, they went to the Brainerd, Murphy Road.
East Hartford, maybe an.
And Glaston.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we got, I think we're, it's interesting though, that this is not, this is philosophically a larger, you can help me, would this not be something that would be considered infrastructure? You know, and it's interesting that, has that conversation taken place at all at the state?
The governor drew a hard line, he said, no, it's interesting, yeah.
This is like the clear, this is like a glaring.
Infrastructure and jobs act.
Gosh, but.
We can look at that, but I think we've got to make this decision.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, that's, we were just on the call, the infrastructure bill, they talked about pulling together for some big projects.
I mean, the problem is, is this is, this is an example of bad governance over 40 years in that this facility and the boards should have been putting money away to deal with this problem. And, but the challenge is, we got lower tip fees the last 40 years as a result of it.
Yeah, we like that.
I mean, that's the problem is, again, I'm a free market capitalist, so this is what happens.
Okay, so as long as the residents, just looking from our residents, their garbage is still going to get hauled.
It's critical we say that, yeah.
Yes.
And it was going to cost more with Mira. And we're hoping it will cost less by letting the haulers go out to get a proposal at a lower rate. And we're taking Tom's valued input here and research and knowledge about Mira to guide us after our good discussion. So I'm gonna, gonna make the motion. So move effective March 28, 2022 to authorize the town manager to exercise the town's opt-out provision of Simsberry's agreement with Mira.
Move that.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, okay, that motion passed.
Thank you for your work on this, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Not a light topic.
We don't have to talk about Mira again?
We will, I'm sure.
Okay, now we have another good topic of discussion coming up. So the next item on the agenda is the 2022 revaluation. And I will let Maria provide context for this one, and I'm sure there's going to be questions.
Sure, so we were made aware that there would be some proposed legislation that would allow towns to delay their 2022 revaluation process. What we were also made aware by OPM, which is the state agency, is that towns would affirmatively have to opt into the legislation and be specifically named in that legislation. As you know, we are scheduled for revaluation to occur this year. We had engaged in a request for proposal process. We have already selected two vendors prior to this announcement being made. We hired one vendor who specializes in commercial real estate and another vendor who specializes in residential real estate. So we have already begun our 22 revaluation process. At this time, only three towns, I should say, at this time, as of the writing of this, not quite a week ago, there were only three towns who had requested to delay the revaluation. It was the towns of Orange, Wilton, and the city of Hartford. I do think it's also important to note that not only would we not be reimbursed for the work that we've done to date, is that we would then, it would just compress our next revaluation schedule. So we would still be required to complete our next revaluation on time, which would then just put only four years in between the revaluations if we were to delay. At a staff level, we reviewed the matter. We don't think it's prudent to delay revaluation. If though, however, you all disagreed and you wanted us to delay revaluation and be added to the legislation, we could then ask Representative Hampton and Senator Whitcoast to request an amendment to the proposed bill to include this in the legislation. But again, at this time, as you can see, and most towns and cities were, who were engaging in revale are not opting to delay. Again, it would just be staff's recommendation that we not delay and continue with the process that we've already initiated.
Okay, questions, conversation?
I see, there's no reason to delay revale.
Well, I have a question though. I was just curious, how far are we along in the process for the revale? Like how much, I know we, how much have we spent and how much time have we put into it? Just for clarity.
Yeah, I'd have to get that specific information from Francine.
Okay.
I think when she filled out the survey, and I don't know when that was, but I think we were about $50,000 into it.
Thank you.
What exactly the work that had been done was, but I think that was the dollar value so far.
Thank you.
Is, and that's, it might not even take, that number, that's person hour. I mean, that's person hour, right? There's not, we're not.
No, it's a contract.
So it's with the contract, you've already signed with the outside vendor to do the, okay. But we have, certainly, when we think about town staff, hour, we don't, do we factor that in? Or is that just sort of the cost of, the cost of daily business?
Exactly, exactly, so that would be the direct vendor cost.
Okay, so then if, if we delayed, there's, the work that's been done, would, it would, some of it would hold, I mean, would hold up, right? Would be valid today versus a year from now? Is that, is that correct? And we would just be, would we just put, would we just be putting data into, and if we built, if we built an algorithm or a system, if you will, that does the, makes the determination of the work, of the value of things that have been done to that point, are you just then dumping in new data? And it's, so some of that money is not just sunk and gone? And we can, it's, or are we just going to be respending another $60,000 next year? So is there any, is there anything, is there anything that's worth that's been done?
Yeah, so I think, you know, some of the inspections that have already been performed, right? That's an example of something that we could reuse. But again, we'd have to verify with Francine. But my recollection is that with each, each revaluation, we would still have to go out and hit a certain percentage. And I'm just off the top of my head, most, I can't recall, is it 10% or 20% that we have to physically inspect with each revaluation? So I could, I could get that number for you.
I think she's at 20, then I had to board a finance.
I couldn't recall.
That's what I think I remember from the board of finance the other night.
I'm also now thinking, would we have to rebid the revale?
Oh, gosh, yeah, of course, right? Right, we'd have to also try to get out of our contracts.
So it's safe to say then, that it could all be washed away? Because that group is not, I mean, they're not going to turn out, nothing's proprietary, but someone else is not going to certify someone else's work, another group is going to certify.
We've also paid for the setup, the structure, the process, et cetera. But to me, it's a bigger issue is, is a couple, five years ago, when prices went down, especially on the big houses, the smaller and medium houses all took a hit and went up. So again, part of the point of revale is you normalize valuations in a town. And some houses go up and some houses go down. And if you disrupt that cycle, are you missing an opportunity for that same thing? And again, our residents are going to pay more than they should have for longer because we're delaying it. And again, what I'm getting at is the big houses went down substantially last time. And candidly, the big houses should be going up right now, which means everyone else gets a lesser or perhaps a decrease. So again, are we, by delaying revale, are we actually passing tax relief to the rich?
Yeah, and I.
Big houses should be going up substantially, meaning they should be paying more going forward.
I just want to say that, so I think that the, that, anybody, you'd have to, you'd have to, I think it's pretty obvious that for, that the larger homes in town have started to escalate again, whereas those, so substantially, which is something that, those homeowners, it's a catch 22. I think most of them want the value of their home so they could recapture lost principal potentially from the ones who bought a while back versus the ones who probably bought the lower side of like, geez, you know, I don't want my taxes going, so it's a catch 22. So that's, but I think it's fair to say that through this reevaluation, some of those homes are going to see an increase in their, their value, an increase in their taxes.
Yes.
That's a fair statement. I'm on the same wavelength as you, Sean. One of the things that I'm having trouble with, when this, some of these questions was posed to me, is that are we, are we, are we stepping into the natural order, so to speak? And should we be getting involved with what is, what is essentially the marketplace? And I don't know if that's what our, our job is to help our residents with their taxes. But to me, getting into, this is something that, to me, is us changing the trajectory that is possibly happening elsewhere, everywhere around us. And we're, we're playing by a different, you know, different set of rules. And it's not something that I'm necessarily understand or comfortable doing. Again, getting involved with natural order of just the cycle of the economy around us.
We're also artificially, if we were to delay, we'd be artificially retaining the mill rate at a higher rate.
Higher rate.
When this revale, the mill rate will come down, which is interesting. Now, on a normalized basis, it actually doesn't come down, but on a, on a number basis, it does, right? And I mean, that's the part of the market correction that it's designed to do. And that's why it's every five years.
I mean, I think we've all heard, you know, we all know that there is some inflation going on right now. And obviously, I think the impetus behind this bill is to see if some of that will settle out over this next year. But I also think in our town, some of the increase in the value that's happened is real. I mean, it's real because people want to move here, because people have really actually changed how they live and what kind of house they want to live in and what kind of community they want to live in. So I think it's really hard for us, even if you wait a year, to know what's going to settle out between what was inflation and what is actually an increase in value. Are we, do we know if we wait, we're going to know more than we know right now? I, I don't, I don't know.
You make a great point. I mean, housing stock was at a, was, in terms of saleable stock, was down substantially before the inflation started to go up. I mean, we've.
Right, we have been.
Price for a number of years now.
Right, I mean.
Exits from New York and other cities have made this an even more desirable community.
Right.
And I think if you talk to, I don't, if you talk to some local economists slash realtors, slash realtor slash economist, who I don't know which hat they think they wear. But I think it's a fair statement that our local housing, the, our, our local housing value did not subsequently recover post 2007, 2008. local housing value did not subsequently recover post 2007, 2008, that others have. And so we, are, is there a, is there, is there not finally?
So it's like we're correcting for that.
Natural correction that has been, become part of, that is, to your point, Amber, I wonder, you described it as real. Is that the delayed correction?
Right.
That should, that happened elsewhere, and we were very much stagnant and, and lagging. So, you know.
Confluence of issues going on here. We are, we're desirable, off the beaten path community, which five years ago, everybody loved the city. Now, you know, population trends have changed, there is inflation, commodities are up, but also a lot of people in this community invested a lot of dollars in beautifying and improving their homes, which is not inflation, that's true investment.
Right.
And again, we had a discussion, right? You led a discussion rightfully so with the Board of Finance the other night. There's a substantial amount of revenue to recapture out there on all the investments. So honestly, delaying this would be incongruent with our desire to fund revenue, to fund sister positions to go capture all this revenue that's out there as well.
True. And when we analyze, when we come around to next year's budget process, I mean, we really do look at the real impact on these home prices. So it's not just that we get, if, if the revale goes up, that taxes will just automatically, you know, that the mill rate will stay the same and, and you will pay on that assessed value. We will look at that impact and make adjustments, you know, as, I mean, there's a lot of thought that goes into what the ultimate number comes out to be. It's, it's not as simple as it's a revale year, it's going to go up, and we're all going to pay more in taxes.
Yeah, right. So I love the argument, don't disrupt the normal order of things. You made that, and you seconded that. I think that's like, to me, that's my answer.
It's like Darwin.
Don't touch it.
It's Darwinism.
Right, because next year, then we'll be like, darn, we saved the revale and the prices went.
I just feel like we're opening up unintended consequences.
I think that's a great, great way to make that argument.
And I certainly think, as far as, as much, I think that there's, the downstate, you know, the downstate towns probably are, there's a little, there's probably a little more hysteria in, in the cost curve that's, that has occurred down there versus here, where, again, I think we, we've had people move to our town, we've seen our, we've seen our, our population increase, that is going to drive up the, 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 the cost of a home. You know, if you've got more consumers buying in lower stock, you know, it's supply and demand. You've also, I think, seen that we are probably correcting, you know, having a lag correction from the correction that didn't, didn't occur in 2012 to 13, that other towns did. So I, and again, that's just, okay, repeat the data, but I'm not, I'm not in the favor. And, you know, we may be betting, we may be making the wrong decision, Sean, but you're right. We, we, as a board, have a chance, have very few opportunities to lower the mill rate. Only way we can do that is not, is not spend. And then this is, and we don't have, this is a way that we can, and we're not lowering taxes, but we have a, we have an opportunity to change the mill rate, and that's something that we don't often have a chance to do. And that we would be delaying that by not taking, moving forward to.
We need to get all those things that are out there that we don't have.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's read. Um, I'm going to move effective March 28, 2022 to not proceed with delaying the 2022 reevaluation process in Simsbury.
Move that.
Second.
Okay, all, um, any more discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously for the five of us. Um, oh, now we have item G, which is added to the agenda. So, Maria, do you want to go over that again? The, um, the 564K? That's the, that's the number we're talking about, right?
Yeah, right, so that was a policy decision that you all had made as part of your budget adoption process, was again, to stabilize the mill rate as well as to, um, help guard against some future debt service increases, was setting aside, um, a portion of funds to then be allocated by the Board of Finance at a later date. Um, so the Board of Finance, again, has been having conversations about that. I do just want to note that 564 is preliminary. The Board of Finance has not yet adopted their budget, so that number, you know, may be subject to change, and that it may increase or it may decrease. Um, but generally, I would say, based on their conversations, um, they seemed supportive of some amount being set aside. Um, again, some of the, the major options that we had talked about were funding capital projects in 2022, 23 with cash, um, that would have otherwise been funded by bonds, or again, potentially allocating a portion of those dollars to capital reserves for allocation at a later point, whether that's, again, to help with inflation costs associated with Latimer Lane project, um, or again, to potentially, um, assign some of those dollars to future debt service payments. But that, again, that's a decision we don't necessarily need to make right now if we transfer those funds to the capital reserve. So at the Board of Finance meeting, they had just said, you know, did the Board of Selectmen have a strong feeling or a strong opinion about any of those potential uses of those dollars? Um, again, if, if you all don't have, you know, a strong feeling or a strong opinion, I think that's okay, too. Um, ultimately, I think that, you know, this really is a Board of Finance, um, decision in terms of how they might feel that those funds are best allocated. But again, if you do have, again, a strong feeling, strong opinion, and you want to, you know, share that with them, I think that's okay as well.
So, just to remind me, that was like from last week, there was a lot of, this is the cash for capital buffer, the 564 that's sitting there, right? And it's not really allocated anywhere?
Right.
And they're recommending that we do something with it?
Well, they will need to make a decision.
They have to put it somewhere, right? So they put it in the reserves, right?
Capital reserve.
Capital reserves, we build up our reserves, but that gives us cash for next year to pay against the debt service, which is going to spike.
That would be an option. Another option, again, would be to use it towards Latimer project for inflation costs. Um, again, if it's in capital reserve, it does give more flexibility as our needs evolve and we get a little closer to that date to see, you know, where the greatest need is. Um, but again, another option would be to take those funds and apply them to 22, 23.
So a project that we currently have is a bonded project, now we would use.
We could use cash for.
But so, so the positive of that is that in the next two years, when that would have hit the debt service, it's going to be lower.
It would free up a little bit of debt capacity. Uh, my recollection when Amy looked at that was a relatively small amount in terms of freight gap.
Right, 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 right.
About $60,000 a year.
Yeah, forgot. Right, so it's not a big impact.
Not maybe as much of an impact.
Okay.
Just a process question. Um, the, the, Latimer Lee, the shovel is supposed to go on the ground this, this spring? Is that, is that correct?
Well, spring, summer.
Okay, and is there, it, because of the situation that we're in, where we know, I think it's fair to say that the cost of project is going to be, is more, okay? So then, do, without setting forth, I, without a new contract or new agreement in hand between the parties, the town, the bonding, and then the, the construction.
We haven't put the project out to bid yet, so there is no.
So there's no, so there, do we, do we, so, do we, we've already, so we don't have the, I mean, so.
We don't have the money. We don't have, we don't have a bid. This is the problem with the state and the whole investigation that's going on with that office in terms of.
So how do we triangulate? How do you, how do you, how do you triangulate to make this to move forward if we know costs are going up, haven't, don't have a contract, and we may have to find money?
Okay, so wait, we're talking about, we're not talking about the 564 now, but this is an offshoot on Latimer.
This is exactly why I think we should put the, the money in capital reserve, because we don't know what's going to happen.
Then we have the flexibility.
And we have the flexibility.
Right.
And my intent was at least to free us up with having as much flexibility as possible. To me, the Board of Finance can put it wherever they want. They can put it in the general fund, they can put it in capital reserve, but my intent, when I voted for it, was to have it be for future capital needs that I don't yet know about. Exactly to your point, I don't know what the answer is to the Latimer problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think capital reserves is a, is a good, like, if the impact was bigger as far as the bonding impact, but if it's not, I mean, I mean, they're going to make a decision regardless, but I think capital reserve is a nice spot for the 564, 5. Um, and Latimer's a whole other discussion, like.
Well, I think it just illuminates.
It, it illuminates the need.
Why we have to, with, why we have to think about this new, a, a new strategy here.
Yeah, agreed. And, um, I know that the, um, the Board of Education was waiting on an answer, um, from the, um, School Office of Construction at the state level. Typically, in the past, um, they will have us go out to bid, um, after we've received approval, which we have, um, but that the sort of anticipated cost should not exceed what had been authorized. Um, what we have been told is there are about 25 projects around the state right now that are in very similar situation to us, is that, right? They went out to, to bond, I'm sorry, they went out to receive authorization to bond for a project, and now with cost escalation, everybody's cost estimates are increasing, you know, due to inflation, so those numbers aren't matching up. So it really is a statewide problem that we're waiting for some guidance from the state to be able to receive authorization to go out to bid, because ideally, we want to have a firm number for you all. You know, right now, the architects, you know, are estimating that inflation impact of about $3 million. Um, but when we go out to bid, is that, is that $4 million for the lowest, most responsible bid? Is it 2.5? Being able to go out to bid is really key, so we have a good number to work with. And then I think, you know, we've strategized a little bit at a staff level, you know, again, potentially, capital reserve might be, you know, a good option for funding some of those inflationary increases, um, also potentially bidding alternates and things of that nature. Um, but again, I hope, we are hoping to.
Or changing the scope.
Changing the scope. Um, so we're hoping to get an answer back from the state in advance of the public hearing, and then provide a little bit more of a, hopefully a coherent, you know, path forward. But again, a, a big key of this for us is having the authorization from the state to be able to go out to bid.
And just, just for the record, because I have to ask, is, because I have heard different versions of this, that there was additions to the project after approval. Those additions have all been taken out, and that's what we're going to bid?
Yeah, I will confirm.
Yeah, because again, I, from a process standpoint, there was no approval from this body, the Board of Finance, or the taxpayers for an augmented project. So what should go out to bid is what was approved for the dollars that we all saw. So, and I respect that there are additions that folks want to make, but that needs to come through a transparent process.
Is there, is there, that is surprising, is there something that, that allow, is there something in, the regs, the charter, whatever it is, or that allows like, like a 1%, a 1% discretion that the Board of, Board of Education can?
It's not the Board of Education.
Come up with.
There's additional bodies that can weigh in. Public building then controls it, and public building can make or break a project. And traditionally, our public building group has done a phenomenal job of controlling costs and coming in on a budget.
Eric's on public building, if, I don't know if he has any insight, but put him on the spot, I guess.
I mean, Wendy, other than just confirming the conversation, they, they're meeting now every two weeks. Um, the, the architects are looking at options for bringing that cost down, but as Maria shared, they are over 2 million more than they wanted to be at this point. Um, those additions that we were referring to, um, the changes in scope are largely clean energy related around the HVAC. Um, and I think in an ideal world, um, you know, we would have had the Clean Energy Task Force weigh in on this project prior, um, so that those things could have been budgeted. Because, you know, if we cut those things out, it's going to, you know, possibly increase the, uh, the operating costs of the building, um, you know, saving money now, but spending more money later. Um, but I also agree with Sean that we can't go beyond what was budgeted.
Eric, it's just, we've got to have that conversation, and I, I respect the, I, I want to save energy and money over the long term, but that's a conversation that needs to happen in daylight with the 15 hours of budget meetings we have, not.
Absolutely.
Not two folks from an appointed board making those changes.
And, yeah, how much are we going to save over the next, however many years to offset the $3 million?
Probably, it's very likely, in this instance, I think you're saying we'd land in the same, land in the same place, but it sounds, to me, it sounds like, you know.
It's a supplemental appropriation in my words.
Not only that, it's also, it's, you could, you know, if, if there's latitude someplace where there's not daylight, that someone could, you know, somebody could, some, someone could put a photo lab in, because they, they want to photo lab, but they don't break, I mean, that just, to me, doesn't, that's, it's not, it's not daylight in that process.
School building is an art and a science, right? And you gotta, you gotta, you gotta have, you gotta respect the art, but there is some science to it. And Eric, I think Eric's doing a good job on public building of trying to work with the parties to do the best project for the town going forward, right? So.
Thank you, Eric.
And again, I do think, you know, as you all were, I think, generally reaching consensus on, and I do just want to, want to confirm is that I think the capital reserve option does give us the greatest amount of flexibility as this continues to evolve and we learn more. Um, so again, if you all feel comfortable with that, I can just relay back that your preference would be to put it in the capital reserve.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry.